Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, it's Andy, it's Horizon Talk Radio, broadcasting live from the Orkney Islands in Scotland. Hope you're having a good day. We're gonna deal with that subject today again, of forced adoptions. The education system in Lincolnshire has actually given the data away, breaching the data, which is not very good. We've got Christina on tonight, she's a whistleblower, and we've got Andrea on from the International Movement for Family Rights dot com. That's the International Movement for Family Rights dot com. Right, Christina, welcome, and Andrea, welcome. Christina, just tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll go on to a few questions.
Right, well, basically, I was forced into a situation whereby I, I ended up having to resign twice from my career. The first time was when I was working at Lincolnshire Catholic School, and I built up a reputation for running a department that was working on nursing, which fitted in very well with the Catholic ethos. And we were being monitored by offset because of the type of work that I was undertaking with my team, and I will say, everything is always teamwork with me. Really, what I wanted to set up with is a family model, and replicate everything that you need to do, acknowledge the young people to achieve their real stage. And sometimes, school for lots of children is very much about safety, even when things aren't great at home. But from my perspective, schools could be very open supporting parents as well, because one of the big themes and knowledge is, is the more successful the parents are academically, and then usually, and I will say loosely usually, that will reflect in the children's academic development. But having said all that, no one sees academically that brilliantly if they are not socially comfortable. And that's really where my understanding about education sets us the, about children being able to feel as socially comfortable as they are educationally comfortable. So what happened is, my first experience of whistleblowing, which was going to another situation, was in regards to the now CEO of Lincolnshire County Council, Debbie Barnes. And she basically failed to discharge her duties as the lead for safeguarding. And then I resigned on the spot, Christmas. That resignation was accepted on Boxing Day and handed to me by the Chair of Governance, who was upset, and didn't set tone to show you that once I'd brought the issue forward in Lincolnshire, it doesn't go away, you are hogged, and I certainly was. So what, my next, I happened to end up back within the local authority, because I was headhunted by my former boss, who was head of the virtual school, but she was called at the time, a team manager. But that was quickly stopped, because Mrs. Barnes decided to pull her husband away from working in teaching and learning and truth vision for the council, in order to put in an ace conding post, which was now to be known as the virtual head teacher. This is when it starts to really demonstrate that Lincolnshire are not behaving in accordance to unbiased employment, ethical employment, or even moral employment. Because we've already had somebody doing the job, but the reason for him to go into this was in order to hide, in order to hide the issue that is the system that his wife Debbie Barnes had bought, maybe about 10 years earlier, which was called the EPEP. The EPEP is a electronic personal education plan, and every child in care has to have one, and it has to be updated three times a year. There is no specification whatsoever that that has to be electronically done. But having said that, if you are going to do these sorts of things, there was a facility on the existing government software system that was insecure within the local authority, but it was decided that they did not want to use that. So the EPEP is actually something that is forced into place in children's day. And what it means is that, in essence, what I'm here talking to people about is that children's data is, when it's involved in any government, that is, being monitored by the government, that information is held by the corporate parent. And that sometimes is a drawing arrangement, sometimes with parents and anyone else that is seen to be the guardian. The PR is in the range of this situation. But the issue is that no one can put child's information onto a cloud network without consent. And when a child is able to give consent, and that's through an age, through the, well, and when they're deemed old enough, which we call that, one of the principles, I can't remember what it's called now, but it was the, oh, Christ. Help me out, someone. The age of consent for children is called, hello? The age of consent, what do we call it? The, one of the challenges, there's a test for it. I don't know what that is. Raise the competency.
There's an age of consent, obviously, which is 16.
Raise the competence, it's possible.
But the legal age of, yeah, the legal age of knowing what they're talking about is around 12, isn't it? If I remember rightly.
It's called raise the competence, when these are a set of principles that were put together to say that a child, usually around about 12, is able to give consent about what they want to do with things, which is an issue within itself. But where my perspective is, is that only at that point that a child can be involved in giving consent. Other than that, it's down to the parents and the local authorities that are in care. But obviously, in a normal situation, it would be parents. Most parents will never consent to anyone giving their data away through the educational authority or anyone else, including schools. We're seeing increasingly a lack of understanding of information handling when we've got children being biometrically abused with the data, because they're using fingerprints for them to be able to access, being able to pay for their lunches, and, you know, getting into certain properties, which again is another abuse of children's rights, because it hasn't been explained to them the implications in the same way that EPEP has been put into place without anyone giving any consideration the right of protection and cybersecurity of young people who are not aware at that point in time, once their data is accessed, you'd never get it back. So this is why the EPEP, because it is something that's maintained outside the government, can be accessed anywhere. Andrea?
Yeah? Andy, I thought you had some one specific thing or something.
Yeah, unfortunately, Christine is so good at her job, she's actually answered all the initial questions. But what we need to do, though, with our system in the UK is actually revamp it totally, because in Lincolnshire, they're failing the data protection big time. It's not the only area in the country, it's not the only area.
Sorry, isn't just Lincolnshire, this EPEP has been sold to a number of other authorities, which is what is highly dangerous. Because what is happening, I think it's probably even spread through the half of the country now. If you look on EPEP, which is, it's called EPEP, and it's run by a company that was called E Care, but was then rebranded as Eagle, as a trademark. Eagle is not a public-owned company, it is a privately owned one. And therefore, my concern is, is why has this been sold to other authorities when we already know that there is a huge data protection issue, and we cannot guarantee that the work of Gary Daniels and his team, who I'm not even aware have been, please check, because this was, this company was engaged when Mr. Gary Daniels was formerly an ex-insurance salesman, approached Debbie Barnes to say that he could help fix the issues in regard to collecting data in order to produce information for the Department of Education and the government, basically. So all the EPEP is essentially is a data gathering tool for local authorities. And Debbie Barnes is one of the heads of the National, one of the heads of the Children's Services, and this has enabled her to use her credibility, because she was able to acquire an OBE and network herself by using, let's say, dubious data in regard to the actual performance that we were having in regard to managing young people's education. So this is, and this is the tip of the iceberg.
Just before you, before Andrea speaks, what's really strange about this is, or coincidental, me and another few people have been working on an idea for family courts and forced adoption. So, you know, basically, the website says it all, the International Movement for Family Rights dot com. You know, they want the courts to be open, transparent, child's names protected, so on and so on. What we've been working on is not so much a database, but it actually means a database in the end. And it was only through meeting you two and sort of getting my brain back to working tonight. I've been working on a little idea with a few people for a few months. And it essentially is a database, I suppose now, but we want it either to be government-run, or we want it, you know, it's got to be proper. And the idea is, you've got a child protection issue, you know, you put it into the, it's not so much a database, more of a reporting tool. So you put the information in, and then it goes, it goes to the right places. And then the other way around, though, if some parent have been good, you know, or children have been good, then that's also reported in this information system. So when social workers, police, look at a problem family, it's there, all the bad stuff, or the other way around, all the good stuff. And it makes them make better informed decisions. Anyway, yeah, so my initial questions have sort of gone, actually, apart from probably one. Has any of the founders of the EPEC system, have they had any other sort of bad business ideas? Or is this their first one?
Oh, this is where I am starting to gain more and more information, because it seems that Gary Daniels has now got in touch with various people of authority in order to start raising India. Now, Ricky Sunak's wife is in education management in India. And I'm beginning to wonder whether Mrs. Barnes has made herself into such a candidate to be able to vouch that that would be a good idea for people to use a system like that and lay it down using Mr. Daniels' inadequate skills, in my opinion, but to set up business in India. But can I just ask, can I just make this very clear, because of the type of audience that you're hitting? I was also made aware that the Adoption Register is also run by another company that is not within the government server and protection thereof. Now, this is an area that I think that maybe other people will be able to help me with gain further information. The reason I know so much about the Lincolnshire one is because it was piloted when I was working actually in school and was invited to learn about the EPEP, actually from what turned out to be my former boss, who was the team leader, this is the lady that was very capable. But at that time, there wasn't question particularly asked as to why we were doing it through an internet-based system, because everybody assumed that if it was a government-run system, it was a government-closed system. But it transpired, once I'd moved away from that, that that wasn't the case at all. It was, it's a third-party provider. And I believe that this third-party provider situation is also used to store, I don't think it's Eagle or Gary Daniels, I think this is possibly another provider. But I am very concerned about those people that have had children taken away from them and entered into forced adoption, or whatever, or the other way around, and the data of the children isn't safe on that server either. But when I've been to make, when I've been to the police, and I've been to the police twice in Lincolnshire about this issue, about EPEP, the response was is that I had to find myself, a person that was actually hacking the system, for them to acknowledge there was a serious missing, a serious information about security. And that's a bit like finding a burglar to burglar a house that's got faulty locks on it. So I'm very, very concerned that the level of protection that the police are offering children, just because it's not physical abuse, this is certainly data abuse. And if that child then ends up in a tried trafficking ring, like we have in our neighbouring areas, Rotherham, for instance, uses EPEP. Rotherham was part of the worst scenario of child trafficking, and it's next door to Lincoln. Where are people making the connection perhaps? The EPEP was hacked into and allowed perpetrators an A to Z guide of where these children would be, and who would be around them, and whether they were under any police protection, that's also stored on the EPEP. And also, it would give information as to who the perpetrator would be looking to avoid if he then went on to groom that child by other alternative means.
Andrea, go ahead, the founder of your website, International Family, sorry, yeah, the International Movement for Family Rights dot com. I keep reading different things. Yeah, go ahead, Andrea, glad to have you.
What it is, is we're a central hub, where groups will come together and work together. And where people can come and report anything they're not sure about. Everyone's welcome, we want to work together, because we believe we can work better together. And, yeah, you're welcome over there, anytime. Can I ask Christine a couple of questions? Hello, I'm here. Hi. What is the real risk for these children then on the EPEP? Is their information easily hacked?
Well, that's, that is the big question. I mean, given the construction of the database that was in use in Lincolnshire, what happens is that, I've designated teachers in school that are overseeing young people that are growing to the care system. And what happens is that, without knowing, they are putting all the information that they are aware of onto this designated database. And that in itself puts the child at risk, because the volume of information that that particular program takes from the national, from these social systems that is run. So basically, because it's updated three times a year, it's a very up-to-date source of information, because it will enable anyone that's looking from the outside in to track a child, even between placements, or even between, I mean, this is the other issue, we often get children coming to court as a result of murders or violent acts. Where that could be extremely dangerous is if there is someone that has suffered as a result of that child entering into a secure unit. All young people in the secure unit are in the hands of the state. So therefore, if they are at educational age, which they will be, obviously, because that's the reason, that information, all the, you know, legal people involved, and probably more data than we should be giving out about how that child is performing in a secure unit, is accessible to people that might have ulterior motives, particularly if that, and will enable that child, I mean, say that were the bulge of children, they will have been on, if they were in Lincolnshire, they would have been on the EPEP system. Now, I understand what people are saying about, you know, their rights, but at the same time, our role is not to judge, it's just to make sure that the law is followed. So it can work both ways. You can have a child that is being targeted because they are not liked or wanted, or you have a child that is actually going to be trafficked somewhere else, for whatever reason. And it could well be that certain groups of places will only want to target audience of children that they want to defile or abuse. I mean, it could well be that you, I don't, they will look for types. And as I say, this system, being a database, will allow them to do that. They can actually easily find the perfect source of victim that they're looking for, and that can be for all sorts of reasons. But longer term, this also means that once that information, whatever that child is, whoever that child becomes later on, somebody's got some evidence of that somewhere. And whatever information is put on that EPEP might be something that they, you know, they could end up being, you know, could be a very famous figure and do not want any past knowledge of where and who they've been with. So it goes anywhere, really, it's just, its consequences are enormous. And then if you add into the fact that these children that can go on the Adoption Register, although their information may be outdated, it will be just one, what I'd say would be. It is just an additional, what we're basically doing, we're showing the likes of Russia or anyone else that wants us to manipulate any of our vulnerable elements of our society. I don't think it would take two seconds, Flavia, may appear to, I mean, I'm not putting into any sides on you doing what. What I'm saying is that if we can, if people can hack Hunter Biden's computer, then they can hack that database. And I would absolutely, I'm 99% sure of that, given that I've seen the archives of how that system works, and it's absolutely incomprehensible. None of it is in the right field, none of it is even relevant to some of the children that were on it, because the database has been patched to such an extent, the criteria are all crossing over, and even the difference in a spelling can mean that a child ends up with two sets of data. It is not a clean system, it's not, and it's so open that you can have a social worker using EPEP, sat in their car on somebody's driveway, using the phone to sort of like input data before they go into an EPEP meeting, and I've seen that done. And say, whatever instance that phone's got rid of, whatever mobile technology they're using, that's gone. Wherever that social worker or teacher, teachers are the same, they can access that from home. And what we have to say is, in the best will of the world, just because they're a teacher, doesn't not mean to say that they are safe from whoever is around them being predators. So if you, that would be another accessible route. And once they know the password, once somebody knows the password, then they've always got it while that user has a profile. So that's the dangerous bit. I mean, one of the other things I should say is that, let's talk about security in Lincolnshire, full stop, is that after I was made to resign, I still have all my IDs and security passes. And so this is the level of security that we're working on.
Can I just jump in there quickly and say, you know, in this instance, I mean, there's other examples. I mentioned one earlier, and maybe we can discuss that before we end the show, about, you know, the database for forced adoption, etc. But in this situation, do we think that private companies such as EPEC shouldn't really be allowed to dabble in this information? It should be a national, proper security system?
Exactly, exactly, the same way that you protect the RAF's weapons system. Whenever you've got vulnerable data, and our children are vulnerable data. The local authority is quite happy to treat children like numbers. And I think that that's where we are with the management of these people that now have got to a point that their power has diluted their ability to think in a common sense framework. What you have to ask yourself is that if it was their child, would that be good enough for them? And when you're working as a corporate parent, in the manner that I thought I was working, if it wasn't good enough for my child, it wouldn't be good enough for anybody else. And that's probably because I worked in schools and saw these children have children. And I have the benefit of working over education and social care. These children aren't just children to me, they're my children.
No responsibility.
Exactly. With others, we're a collective, because we're a community.
Yeah.
They're not just my children, full stop. It's just like saying, if you came to me and said, I'm really struggling with my child, can you help me? Of course I would help them. And that's what really should be happening before we even get to these points, where children are being put into care. But this is where your organisation works. But this, this is where your organisation works the well, uh, Andrea. But, um, it, 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 uh, one of the other things is, is, you, you know, when we're talking about corporate parents, it makes it seem like only parents are important, you know, they. And we've got to remember that in actual fact, grandparents, family friends are also, you know, major participants in parties that, that unfortunately, the, the way that systems are set up in local authorities are archaic. And they do cater, they pay, well, they pay lip service to the extended family. Um, but one of the things that I would always think, when I was working in schools and working, um, in, in, in the nurture environment, isolated by set up, it would be most important for me not to ask a child, um, whose parents were, it'd be more a case of who at home do you talk to about issues, um, you know, what grown-ups do you talk to at home? Um, and that's a very, um, interesting question because it isn't always, um, parents, I mean, all sorts of people, but it's also not fair to assume that a child has gone to parents' room either. Sometimes we, um, you know, um, we have community carers, and as far as I'm concerned, that is what it's about, Ken.
Yeah.
And what, what the system is currently doing, it's breaking down the framework and making a child into a confidential bundle of information to be trapped around on the internet willy-nilly without anyone saying, hello, is this right?
Yeah.
Um, and really, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm, I've tried my utmost to make people aware of how dangerous it is. I mean, just another, um, example of this is, um, for military families. Um, if you, if you're, if you've got a child, if you've, if you've got a child perhaps to go into corporate care for every reason, and you are a military personnel, and perhaps you're overseas, that information about where you are will be accessible to these people as well.
So not, not only can they get, yeah, they can also get, uh, how each station, and what information they have on the parents or.
And that being open to exploitation because, um, so if you've got, if you've got a member of senior military or government, um, security personnel, for whatever reason, and it, it isn't just, it, the people, you know, children who come from all backgrounds. But what, what, what the issue is, is that you also can have arrangements that this, that they will be able to, but, you know, from a military point of view, be able to find out the weaknesses somebody's got or within a certain set of, um, whatever the forces is, whether it's RAF, army or whatever. And that, that, that person, that grown-up, that adult could well be up for, uh, exploitation by whatever negative, um, force is, is wanting to, um, be able to, as you say, you know, blackmail, um, extort, whatever. And so when we're talking, when you asked me earlier, um, about the fact that, um, you know, what, what are the real dangers to this system? Like, you know, you can go on and on and on and and it rea- and that, but that is what the problem is. These, these issues have not been thought, you know, thought through in a whole range of different scenarios. And as I say, not a lot of people realise that children can enter care because of parental death, not just neglect, not just through poor management at social care, making really bad decisions. But it can also affect, you know, um, people that are, you know, difficult and, and, and all sorts of things. And that's where this system does not allow itself to show, well, it doesn't show me that there is any security given what I know. And I know, I also know that not the, the, this system has been brought in because the inadequacy is that Mrs Debbie Barnes, who was a former nurse, um, had not had the background or the, you know, I don't, I don't know whether, what those qualities she's got, I don't know whether she, I didn't think she ever went to alcohol products. But what I will say is that her experience of information security is not as adequate as I would expect somebody in her position. Um, and, um, if that, if that runs down to the fact that we've also got internal issues where these children had files set up on Word documents within the local authority. We even had, we, it, the system was not insecure, we had to run for over a year, well, like, under a year, paper-based system because the EPEC was so unstable. Now, in terms of in- information, um, management, that is a huge no-no because that, that information is being felled around in somebody's car. We're going to qualify me to instructions in our main function. Um, we're also, we, we were replicating children's data in various different areas, not just on EPEC. But one of the most shocking things was is that after I resigned, um, the whole of the EPEC system was a close down, I found out. Uh, or lost, well, something happened, there was a big security event and they lost all the data. And as far as I'm aware, that was never reported to the ICO, which, which is a mandatory thing any company should do if they lost data or, um, there's been some, um, disease hacking or whatever. That's it. And if you think about it, perpetrator only need to get in once to get a whole lot of information.
Yeah.
And if he never does it again, he's got a lot to go on, it's quite a long, you know, long period of time.
Yeah. See, and more and more with the, you know, being involved in child, in, um, uh, you know, child reasons and things like that, including social workers, including teachers and headmasters.
Police officers.
Yeah, police officers, it, it, yeah. It, it's not for anybody's rights.
And that's why I'm concerned because I'm telling these people we've got a problem, and I put it out there, but why are they not listening? And what you've got to ask yourself, given the state of our government at the moment, um, and we've got people like, um, Suella Braverman, who's growing around data, um, at, at the levels that she's at, and she's accessing through her own private, which is exactly the same thing essentially.
Yeah.
Um, it, yeah, I mean, she's, I mean, if she was operating the EPEC system, there would be nothing to stop her sending an email out, giving a detail of how to act. Totally, that easily. All it needs is a username and a password, and you're in. Although there are parameters within it that can lock it down, I'm sure a very, very, a capable tech, techy person would be able to disable. Um, and a couple of this will be a head teacher at one of my local schools going into the, um, the store data of EPEC and altering it.
Hmm.
Um, so that, um, uh, so that it showed on the face of the, um, the pet, that the child was a boy instead of a girl. So it was, um, it just showed you how unsafe, any, any system where you can get into the store state is not very, is not very secure. And I know wonder he said to me, um, Christina, can you please tell me um, exactly where does this data go to and who uses it? And I replied, oh, that's a very good question.
Yeah.
Um, just on another quick note about data breaches. Earlier a few hours ago, um, Royal Mail has just admitted, uh, that there's been a lot of data breaches with customers and parcels, which potentially means, um, when people are on holiday, they use a system called Give Me My Mail Later. I don't know if that's right terminology. But anyway, yeah, Hold My Mail Royal Mail, send it to me when I'm back, when I let you know. The data has been breached, allowing burglars basically to know when they're not there because they've told Royal Mail, I'm not going to be there. I mean, also, um, I fi- I fi- I do find it distressing, um, all this and you know, just imagine, you talked about the adoption, um, people, just imagine, you know, foster carer, um, or an adopted parent, you know, whatever reason, they've got the child, they've had it for, sorry, the, the child's been in their care for a long time. There's some kind of data breach for the adopted parent, um, or the foster parent. I mean, that must be alarming on, on, on anyone. We need a new system, we need it fast, but like you said, you know, this government's in a mess. Uh, you mentioned Ri- Ricky Shunax, um, whatever his name is, the Prime Minister's wife in education now. He has actually got big investment in a company that will help Russia, um, kill us all. Uh, but nobody's talking about that. I mean, this is not what the show's about, but it is about doing the right thing by the people.
I just, I'd say to that, another issue that you've just pointed out is that if there's a security breach and it's foster carer, it could well mean that that foster carer can no longer continue looking after that child. That child is deemed to be a child that is confidential, and that child's information has leaked out to parties unknown. Highly likely that the, the, that, that, that will end up in a scenario where that placement will have to be broken down by the safety style.
Yeah. And it impacts again on the child, doesn't it?
But I've just remembered something that do keep going on because I'm passionate about all this. Uh, remembering the last time we spoke, I mentioned, um, a foster family, not a foster family, a girl that was, um, she lost her two children in Lincolnshire, and her name was, um, um, I forgot the first name now. The family was called Freeman. Me and her, we, we did some protests outside the Lincolnshire County Council. Um, yeah, um, hang on, so I've try, do you know what? You're so passionate, and before you've explained it, you've forgotten. It'll come back to me. Uh. It's gone.
And, yeah.
We're only human. I'll get it in a minute before, before.
Well, I'm doing, I usually go to tech, we walk on until we remember. Yeah, we do, don't we?
Oh, yeah, that's it. Um, I, it's come back quickly. So, we, you know, we were doing all this, um, campaigning and we, we met a couple of people, um, they call themselves Anonymous. You've heard of the Anonymous group. And we, um, said to them, you know, we're not being funny, but, you know, um, and you don't have to do it, we know you're in, in for the people. Can you make certain records disappear in Lincolnshire County Council? And they did. And in fact, while it was happening, the whole website for Lincolnshire County Council, in fact, the NHS at the time for the area and the social work records, it, they all went froze for a few hours until certain false information went astray.
I, I was there when we had two, two security breaches where the system was offline for more than a day on one occasion.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was about.
Was within the system. So if, but if, you see, the thing is, to be fair to people like Anonymous, they're not there to actually ruin people's lives, they're there to try and make people aware that other people are trying to, to destroy and compromise other people's lives without them even being aware of it.
Exactly. The da- the data that was removed was false allegations made up by a social worker towards this family, um, that I mentioned, the Freeman family. Uh, um, I'm just trying to think what year that would have been. Uh, around about, I mean, I'm not good with my dates, two seventeen to eighteen, something.
That's when I was there.
Yeah. You know, one other thing that bothers me, social work will actually now by the year twenty twenty five, be allowed to access your medical or your confidential medical record and have notes and things in them.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's correct.
But that is, will be part of the privatisation of the health service, no doubt, where you'll probably end up having to make personal arrangements about your data security with your provided, um, health carer. Um, and the re- and the rest of us will be like America, it'll be sort of like, um, you know, that you, you have to almost be dying for someone to, um, assist you, and then it has to be paid out of some fund if you're lucky.
Yeah.
And I've always, I've won, if anybody's, um, a big fan of Pimple Popper, um, I will ask them to, if they're in any concern about our health system, if you want to go and have a look at what the state people get into in America have had this vigilance for you, um, that, they, they, there aren't able to access the care that we just take for granted. And it's only because we've become very used to having the wonderful services, the NHS, and previously, um, um, the welfare state. We, you, you call it the welfare state. What happens to welfare?
Hmm. It went out the window.
We don't talk about welfare anymore, do we? We don't even call, you know, it's, uh, there is not even any well care.
Hmm.
Um, but, but, but I will stress that there are good people within the, um, the system. And I, I'd like to think I was one of them, but there are many that are compromised by the fact. And, and that was one of the things with me, it was that if I left, those children would be given to somebody else without possibly any of the skill that I got. So I was always com- compromised by the few for the many. Um, and that was a situation I've never been put in.
No, you shouldn't. And because you've got morals, morals are what need to be made.
I had the, I, I had the spirit and the conviction given to me from somewhere, whether it's, I mean, I'd like to think it was from up above. Um, but for me, I will say it made me very poorly. Um, what made me very poorly was the lack of the welfare.
Hmm.
And, um, and when you were brought up as a child, and I, I was a child of, um, fathers that went off to war to fight for his country so that we could have the freedoms that we enjoy now, while we think the freedoms that we enjoy now. Of course, more and more we see that actually the freedoms are an illusion. Because I only, and I've ended up in this situation because the, um, there is a, 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 a there was an exploitation of the, um, discrimination act that was able to be used by Karen by banning me from driving twice without any reason whatsoever, medical or otherwise, apart from that I've been taking a SSRI, which is an anti, which many people take. But what, what happened, and that, and that, and, and he banned me duly to humiliate me and stop me going around schools because I'd started to reveal the facts. And it was the last
What was going on?
Yeah, my last day in work was after a meeting, um, with the team where I'd said that the system wasn't fit for purpose and schools were reporting to me that they were having children here on their accessible file that were never even at their school, and they wanted to know why that was. That question went into my professional development and was completely ignored. But during the course of my termination of employment, I was subject to, um, situations whereby, well, the law was broken so many times, I'd mail delivered to other people's houses. Um, I, um, I had, um, the le- le- legal services supporting, um, the fact that, um, that illegal things were, were unlawful things. By, that insofar as it is unlawful to, um, stop somebody working, um, by using technical characteristics, quite honestly, yeah, um, this was, this was to a point in my day, they, they did my family. And that's where it's no holds barred, which then led me to think, why is director, well, why is the, um, the, the, you know, chief executive officer of Lincolnshire who, um, got the job after make, paying off the last CEO who had approached to offer me some unbiased, um, protection, which was refused, but he was, um, To offer me some unbiased um protection, which was refused, but he was um. He was, he he was paid off three hundred thousand pounds and given an O V E. At the same time as Mrs Barnes received earth. Um so essentially, what what's happened was is that they they had a plethora of of O Vs, C V As go out to staff. There's um um bribes essentially, um which is something that I think that um. The same with Leah Cross now, she was in office four days and she's giving people all sorts of rewards for having. Set her up in a system where. That that where she's compromised national, not not only security, but also reputation and um. Ability to con- con- contribute to regain that. It's uh much easier to lose a reputation than it is to uh. Gain one. And and that's where, right, we haven't, I have absolutely no confidence in my local authority. And given that my uncle was mayor of Lincoln and died in office. I think my hi- the history of my um, you know, association with Lincoln is is there. I do not want to have these people ruining my local government and wrecking my services and paying themselves. As a couple, two hundred seventy thousand K a year. When I'm going into town and I'm seeing homelessness.
Yeah.
I'm seeing desperation, I'm seeing increased drug use. This is Lincoln's. Lincoln's, the, we're not talking about Birmingham, I'm not saying that Birmingham is right for this, but Lincoln's. And it doesn't say, and that's because it's a locality issue. And what Mrs Barnes and team have been able to do is say, because of the geographical um issues. Um it's more difficult for her to get positive results. And what, the one thing I will say is that, given that the E P E costs. That has a staffing of over twenty people in Lincolnshire, which is bigger than some of the schools that we visited. These auditors, it went from five when I started to over twenty. Um and we're talking a million pound mark to to run that department.
Yeah.
And the thing is, is not one of those, not one of those year-on figures have improved by the use of E P E. Why are we spending it and stopping children in schools have immediate access. To their pupil premium plus. Because at the moment, what what's happened is that um the auditing process. Means that they've got to jump through so many, um and they've got to do it legally because they're. They're told that they've got to do this by the corporate parent, fill these forms in. So they're really, they've got no option at that in the current situation um to appeal against their base. And say, I'm not filling this in because you will be offset. And that's how, that's how offset are helping encourage what to me is a vile and dangerous. And it's nothing to do with education, it's merely to do with voluntary proof and being able to sow. To a very naive offset instinct of everything in the conspiracy theory.
Yeah.
I mean, what you have to remember is that when offset go in, they they cleanse everything. So that there is no way any dirt will come out.
Hmm.
And if you've got head teachers that don't realise, they are by proxy giving away the, they looked after children's details. They've got in school and they should be worried, head teachers, because they 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 are ultimately responsible. As a corporate parent, through their designated people, to ensure that their children are safe while they're at school. Not the school sending data out, somebody they don't even know. Basically, it's a bit like, it it you could say it's a bit like somebody ringing in, saying, my name's Joe Bloggs, can you please give me the information? To where the little tough child is or where you're around them.
Yeah, yeah.
Sad fact, sad fact.
No, I've known him from over the fall and via email, so. I mean, anybody from anywhere could email him. I could email him enough for information and I bet he didn't give it.
Well, the thing is, is how many people get messages come through their phone, like I did the other day, from a company called Eagle Police or not. Telling me that I needed to fill a form in for a tax um return.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with it. The interesting thing was, they were calling themselves Eagles.
Yeah.
Yeah? Eagles.
Makes you wonder what other information they're getting on that.
Well, who who is running this eagle? Is it the same?
Yeah, well, when I look on uh. Eagles Digital Solutions.
Yep.
Um Gary Daniels.
Yes.
Earlier.
Yep.
He is managing director, the only name.
Yep, yep. You won't be able to because that will be done somewhere else.
Yeah.
And why is there only one director of that company?
Exactly.
I mean. What company dealing with children personally was major, just really one person?
Yeah.
And 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 the other thing is, is that who are the people that work for him?
Hmm.
And, you know, um I would imagine, given my knowledge of personal knowledge, I've met him, say, four or five times. Um the hair still hasn't gone down off the back of my neck.
Hmm.
Um when um and when he was available, which was anywhere between when he was having a kitchen fire and um. A dog was run over in the street with a tattoo of the.
Yeah.
Um. This guy was never available and and couldn't problem solve things immediately or even within a reasonable length of time. But what 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 is a concern to me is if he was employed, he played in his data creation or whatever.
Yeah.
That bloke probably goes down the pub and says, hey, I've got quite, I've got, I'm working on this new job and this bloke's on at this uh. You know, he's got. Um how much do you want to offer me for a, you know, getting a few engravings?
Hmm, makes you ask, and that's the reason.
And that's why I don't sleep at night easily because.
Yeah.
Every day that continues to go on, I cannot guarantee in, I I cannot sell food myself.
Hmm.
Say it's all all right. For all I know, somebody out there picking up a child. Cause they know where that child is and they know all about that child.
And it's because of that death.
And everyone knows what, you know, what the questions are about the docs and register one as well, that's one to be explored. But the other thing is, is that you will find that in the N H S, they're doing very similar things. I pointed out earlier, this this, the reason that they do third party as well in local government. Is because they're dividing everything off, so that you cannot blame the local government anymore.
Exactly.
They then say.
All these, all these things have been passed while we've been. In Covid, I'm watching the thing between restrictions for.
Yeah.
Uh on TV and nothing mentions about any of these hundred, one hundred. New laws that have been passed. While we've been watching all that.
And these laws that have been passed are generally to stop people asking questions and knowing where their information is going to and from.
Yep.
Yep. I will still ask the question if um, and I think it was more evident that the 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 the. The amount of file information that was held on President of America um son's laptop. Um was so easily hacked into and made public to everyone. Who say that some somebody might quite happily. Um do the same with E P E and just send it all out there.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, and I, and my question was, is why did they have change the name from E P E? Uh sorry, E T E to Eagle.
Eagle, yeah.
And 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 I, and my personal belief is that the reason for that was because Mr Daniels was not making any money legitimately.
Yeah.
So Mrs Barnes somehow was able to reinvent it. Because I would not be surprised if Mr Daniels had said to her, Mrs Barnes, I've got the entire. Um database of all the children in care on my system. If you leave me alone to wallow or drop off the face of the earth financially, I might just tell someone. So. And they still got that ability to do that any one point. If you go to Gary Daniels, put a gun to his head and say, let's show me the information, I'm sure he would.
Yeah, of course he would, he would.
And that's why it's so dangerous that one person can steal all the information for all the counties. That have bought in E P E and I'm sure, I'm pretty sure it's about half.
Hmm, hmm.
So it's not just Lincoln that I'm talking to you about, you know, about. I think we even have it in, you know, um Merseyside and all those sorts of areas as well, so. Far as I'm aware, it's not got in Scotland, but um I saw it, it won't be gone away if if it continues to be um. Tech by government sources, which clearly is. Hello?
Yeah, no, um, I'm listening.
I'm gonna ha- I'm gonna have to call off now because I need to, need to go to the bathroom. So obviously, is there anything else that you want to ask me?
With it.
Don't call with it, haven't we?
I think.
Well, for tonight, this is a good show, um we've done the initial thing and um. Andrea, we need to do a follow-up. Uh with with Christina maybe and then, you know, so on and so on, inviting. Um people from forced adoptions and trying to get a solution to all this.
Anyone that needs to know any information, I'm quite happy to call me, that if you, you know. You know, if anybody wants specific information about the E P E, I'm quite happy for you to. More call me and ask me um to, you know, speak to them, obviously. But I'm gonna have to go, so I'll hopefully hear from you soon.